Called order, the city council recon session for CBS Grand Forks Tuesday, January 22, 2019 is now five o'clock. City clerk, please co-roll.
Mayor Steve Gander?
Here.
Council mem-- oh, sorry. Council President Mark Olstead?
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel?
Here.
Council members Clarence Vedder?
Here.
Dale Helms?
Here.
Tim Reapell?
Here.
Tim Johnson?
Here.
Mark Demers?
Present.
Does determine a quorum. Move down to number two right away. Consider direction on future PEG channel. Mr. Thompson.
Okay, when we started broadcasting our meetings in the end of 2016, the desire was to have our meetings also broadcast on the local cable system. Part of a franchise agreement allows for us to have a city channel on the Midco system that serves our community right now. Finally did some coordination with the video engineer at Midco and we would be able to run our own channel with minimal expense. We likely have everything we need already in place. Possibility of if we have some incompatibilities between systems of needing a $2,500 encoder. The other thing is, I've been having some conversations with Pete Haga also about a joint PG channel during some updating of their infrastructure. So just looking for some council direction, where the council would like to see this go.
You said a $2,500 encoder and then in the writing here it's $2,800.
Okay, $2,800 is, I probably padded it for shipping and tax and...
Questions, Mr. Demers? I thought you said so?
No.
Okay, sorry.
I think you want some direction from us, whether we should maybe do a shared channel with them or have our own. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Yep.
And the investment on our side will be similar, because if we went with, if we did something joint with Grand Forks, we would have to feed, give them a feed somehow.
And I would think, just for conversation, the one incentive we would have to share is if we're sharing it, the viewership would be probably better, because whoever's interested in their stuff and our stuff would be drawn to that same place. Whereas if each had their own, you're trying to split maybe the similar audience and you might actually get better viewership on a shared one, but you'd have your own identity on your own. So there's some pros and cons each way.
What, in your mind, what is the pros and cons of separate and, you know, together?
As the mayor pointed out, the pros are, we have local government for the area concentrated in one channel. The cons are scheduling conflict, you know, entering joint power agreement and those type of issues that come up. Advisory boards.
Do we see any changes of certain meetings would have to maybe move around, let's say EDA or plan zoning or whatever it may be on both sides of the river? Maybe that'd be a con that we'd have to figure out and would that maybe cause an issue?
As I get into, as far as I know, we don't really have any scheduling conflicts as far as when their meetings are as compared to ours. I know our council meetings are on different nights, so it'd just be if there's a holiday or something like that. And as far as the things like for our EDA, planning and zoning and that, we typically have those once a month and I'll double check, but as far as I know, I don't believe they conflict with anything on the Grand Forks side. So I would think the conflict would probably be fairly minimal and something that we could handle on a case-by-case basis when they do come up.
And would you be providing work for them and be compensated for that, or would you not have to do anything with them at that level when their meetings are going on? Or are they needed to do something?
The proposal we're talking right now is they would be upgrading their stuff, we'd provide them a feed, they would switch to our feed when we have something scheduled.
But for, you know, hourly or for a feed, you have to be physically doing stuff for them when they're on, like say Monday nights for council meeting, would you have to do something during that time they're in session? Would you physically have to be working?
Not on the, not on the Grand Forks side, no.
Would you have the technology to do, say, a one or two hour delay if there was a conflict in schedule?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Ms. President. Like Mr. Thompson said, this has been, not a long process, but we've been working on this for a while. When we first started this process, you know, we reached out to Grand Forks, Mr. Haga, I think Kevin Dean was the, was their public affairs director at that time. They came over and they gave us some guidance, kind of, we laid out some possible options and how we could, you know, go onto one channel and we looked at that. As we progressed, how funding came, what was feasible here, you know, the great work that Mr. Thompson's, yourself and your team-
And staff.
And team did, you know, we really outperformed, I think, what that initial conversation was talking about. I think, you know, we're at a point now where Grand Forks is kind of coming to us and saying, you know, "We want a little bit more of what you guys have." Now, we want to be good neighbors, we want to, you know, have a joint effort if we can, but my fear is, you know, we've just gone through this branding thing, you know, where we've, we've tried to identify and really brand and market for East Grand Forks. I think that we would have to go through a whole nother branding thing that would be, you know, Grand Cities or whatever, to try to merge these together. And then I think if you ever got to a point where you'd want to break apart, that's a whole nother process of breaking those apart. I think at this time, I believe, I mean, you're probably talking at, you know, channel, what, three and four? I don't know what the channels would be, but it's not like they're going to be on the other ends of the dial, or what, do they have an idea, or?
They did not give me a channel number. They did indicate, though, they would not take anything away, would be in addition to lineup. So right now, most people around here get the Grand Forks municipal channel. They get a Crookston channel now, used in a place where UND was.
Right.
And then they would add us there, because they said that would actually be easier for the way their head end to set up than to take those off and put us on in place of those, so.
Because I think, you know, talking to Mr. Thompson and what is possible, I think a better play for East Grand Forks is to do our own work, get on our own channel and brand for the branding that we did. And that, part of that branding was being connected, right? But I think that the connection that we should think about is working with the schools and working with, you know, other places in East Grand Forks to jump on to, or Polk County, you know, other places in East Grand Forks that can, can benefit from that other, or that bandwidth in that space. So I guess my preference would be to do it on our own. I think we have the capacity, the capability, and I think we, that leaves our options a little bit more. I can just about imagine on a night like tonight, you know, it's gonna, we're gonna get shoved to nine o'clock or whatever. Not that everybody would be hanging around waiting for supper to watch this or whatever, but that's, it's gonna be that every single time. We're gonna, it's, it's not, they're never gonna, it's never gonna be Grand Forks, you know, being taped delayed or anything like that. It's gonna be East Grand Forks every time. And I, since we have the capability, the costs are the same, why not do it our own?
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I agree with Mark. I think we could do our own, because then we could rebroadcast maybe a second time for those that didn't see it while we're on live. Where if we're butt heads over there, we're gonna be in, under their, well, they'd have first choice, that'd be my guess.
Any questions or comments, guidance?
Do we use this channel for like snow removal or anything like that, or emergency, or?
I have a channel, yeah.
Oh, I mean, if we did.
We could.
We have our own?
Yeah.
I'm for that.
You know, I think, me personally, I think having our own channel is probably beneficial as, you know, I agree with Mr. Demers on our branding, you know, we went through that process. I think that's something that we need to build on, I think can go from there. I think you working with them and, you know, is great. I mean, you know, we can have our own identity of the brand and not have to worry about, as of tonight, I'm sure their meetings tonight, our meetings tonight, you know, it's gonna happen a couple times a year. I just think that's something we need to, if we want to showcase our community on that channel, and I think it's the best way to go. Anybody else have any comments on that, or?
Just to comment back on the thing with Mark, I mean, yeah, I think there's a lot that could happen with that expansion, with the connection with all three schools in town. I think that would be a great thing to get out there along with all our stuff. I think it would be awesome to be able to broaden that and use that channel. You know, you go to all these other little, not smaller towns, but you go to, and you click on the TV and you come across all the things that go on in Park Rapids and Walker and you kind of know. And it'd be kind of interesting to have, I think it'd be great.
You can broadcast, I mean, I would be wide open to go into the schools, saying, "Hey, football games," or, you know, I, you know, all that. I know they do some streaming stuff or whatever, but like you said, put it all in one spot. This is, East Grand Forks' is a spot and we want, and I think EDAs can help or use it water and light. We've talked about, you know, broadcasting, you know, conservation type messaging and stuff like that. I just think that space, and as it, as we progress into 10 years down the future, you know, more and more people are gonna want that real estate, right? And if you've got two communities that are trying to grab onto it with all that they want to do, all that we want to do, it's, boy, just like a network. But that's my thought. And I certainly understand the desire to work with Grand Forks and put it all in one spot, but, because that was our original inspir-, you know, that was our original direction. But I just don't, I don't know, with the technology, especially at that time, we were looking at, you know, trying to tech, we were looking at really expensive process and we've, you know, with Mr. Thompson and his staff and everybody, you know, and the way technology is now, you can do these things at fractions of the cost that we were talking about originally. So it's less capital intensive, you know, for those type of things, so.
Mr. Murphy?
Okay, yeah, so I guess it looks like the mayor has something to say too, but I was gonna say, as far as Mr. Thompson and I are concerned, as far as staff, I think from what we're hearing, we have the direction, at least of a consensus of the council of which option we'd like to, you'd like to pursue, so we can take that under, we'll move forward with that, but I didn't mean to preempt you.
Oh, no worries. I was just gonna say, as for cost, you know, a lot of the cost is actually generating the material, but we're already doing that for other streams.
Yes.
So that's already done, and that's an even cost. And then the other piece of it is the value of the real estate, you know, the bandwidth of getting that signal out there is going to be driven by viewership. But viewership is also going to be driven by how broad a base you have, right? If you do have it to the schools and all these other places, now suddenly more folks are going to be watching that channel and the demand does go up. So the thing kind of starts to spiral up on its own, if we do it right, hopefully.
All righty. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go back to number one. Sheriff Tadman is here today.
Hello there. Apologize for being late. I just wanted to-
Do you want to come up and just, do you need to sit down?
Yeah, have a seat. Join the party.
Mark, go make the mic on.
Okay.
Can you hear me now? No? Anyways, I just wanted to come over and then, and put a face with the name. Appreciate you giving me the chance to come over here and I'm looking forward to working with Chief Headland and the rest of the cities. And if there's any resources or assistance the sheriff's office can, and provide and help out with, I'm all ears and ready to go, so.
Got something, mayor?
I'll throw one thing. First of all, thank you. You made several trips to our community. We met in my office a couple of times and you gave me your philosophy and I got very comfortable with who you are and how you operate. And also, you hit our city very, very thoroughly. I know you went door-to-door and made sure people knew who you are and what you stand for. So we really appreciate that. When we rang bell for Salvation Army, they wanted me to be sure to mention to our chief and also, I'm sure to you, if you ever have a search or any effort going on and you have lots of people out there, they'd love to feed us, right? So we'll be out there and hopefully it never happens, because it's usually kind of a sad thing. But if you ever have such an effort as that, probably you already know it, but Salvation Army has said, "This is why we're here. We're ready in a moment's notice to feed any sort of volunteer effort that you have going on." And so I'm sure you already have such a connection, but it's pretty cool that we have that organization.
Yep. You, your Salvation Army is East Grand Forks and the Grand Forks area. Our starts in the Crookston area, I think. And now that you're speaking of that, just to let you know, is we got a really great donation out of the fertile area, if you didn't hear, of a check for $45,000. So that's gonna be great for, you know, the areas, so to help out, but, yep, very nice, so.
So thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments or requests from Sheriff Tadman?
Chief?
Thank you. One of the things that, I don't know if it's a chief cost driver for us at our police department, is transfer from our station to the jail in the hall or whatever. I mean, it's, you know, everything goes through Crookston.
Yeah.
And it really, it costs us quite a bit for staffing and all those type of things. One of the things I would, I would like to have you guys working, and I'm sure you guys have talked about these type of things before, but is try to work on a way to try to help bring, you know, work better on transferring people from here.
Inmates?
Right. Well, people, yeah, I guess, technically you call them from, but yeah, when, when they've been arrested here, you know, we have to, either it ends up being another shift or you bring another guy in or holdover and, you know, for these, these transfers over, it really is a pretty big taxing thing for, for folks. I mean, when we talk about where our costs go, that's one of the things that always comes up and, you know, you know, so if we could look at trying to make that process a little bit better or help out in some way, you know.
Yeah. The procedure that we run with now is in the mornings when they have a holdover of somebody incarcerated, that's when they sign on, that's the first thing that they're given, either to the road patrol or the transport position. And it's into our transports right now, is that they run over and pick them up from the facility here and then run over. And unless it's an emergency purposes, I think it's, was set for once a day currently, wasn't it? Yeah. So that's what the procedure we have now, so.
So your county people come here and get them?
Yep. We, we have transport people in our area and we also put a car over here at one time, so we could just transfer back over versus one of our transport deputies driving over and then picking up a car and driving back this way. So what was, I was left at the police department and for the circumstances, other than not taking care of it, we pulled that, but now we have transport officers in that, that's their main job in the morning, is go to Grand Forks or East Grand Forks and pick up any, any inmates that are there.
You can go to Grand Forks?
Yep, we go there all the time, you bet. We pick up there in the mornings or here in the mornings when we sign on. If we don't have anybody here, then we'll send somebody over.
So do they have to be extradited?
Yep, they're extradited. We don't pick them up over in Grand Forks until the paperwork's through on that, but it usually doesn't take long, so.
And then all your, one other curious thing I have is, you guys, all your, like, units are GPS tracked, aren't they?
Yes, they are. We have AVL on all of our units.
Do you have?
All of them in the, the transport van, not, there's some vehicles that don't have them all because of cost-effective ways is what they're mostly at the office. There's, yeah.
Is there a way that we could get a report once a year, something like, how much time is a patrol car or, you know, the transports are actually in East Grand Forks?
The deputies, you mean, or transport? I think we can look at it and see what we can come up with. I can work with Chief Headland to see exactly what information you're looking for of what, how much time they're in the city of East Grand?
Right, right.
Okay. I can surely look at that and see what we can do with that system. Yeah.
Mr. Demers, are you wishing for more or less time?
More.
That doesn't always come that way with other cities, so. That's good, that's good.
I was just gonna comment that I've had the pleasure working with Sheriff Tadman since I started here in East Grand Forks, and he's been very good to work with, and our departments work extremely closely together. And the training that was mentioned earlier is just one example of that. We had one of the sheriff's deputies over along with a couple of Crookston police officers, a couple of years back, they hosted the same course and we sent officers that way. So we work very closely together. It's a good relationship.
Appreciate you coming, sir.
Yep, thank you for allowing me to come over. I didn't think it'd be such a big work session, but she said, "Oh, we just have a small work session," so.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep.
Move on to number three, request for direction on infill building. Mr. Gertie?
From time to time, there have been suggestions that we should consider the sale of the infill building, that whether or not the city should retain ownership of a building that, where we have tenants, commercial tenants. We are now beginning negotiations on the common area and the maintenance of that. And what we're looking for is if that should come up during that, those negotiations, or based upon discussions that have had here, I'm looking for direction on what we should do. Are we, is the city council interested in the sale of the infill building? Or if not, and if the city council gives us direction to look at the sale of that building, that will trigger things such as obtaining an appraisal to determine value, market value of the building, and getting input from the various departments, the city hall for impact. And it may also, it was discussed also at the EDA today, and there was concern about the impact upon the existing tenants as well, depending upon a sale.
So my thoughts on that, I know in the past, over the last, since I've been on for the last couple of years, we've talked about, no matter what building it is or what piece of land, what it is, that should the city be a landlord, you know, goes back to when we went through this with the Riverwalk Center. And I think that, you know, us as a landlord is, you know, something I personally don't think we should be in as a city. The point about the keeping, making sure there's tenants in there, I understand that point. I think that it's important that the discussions that you're having now with the maintenance agreements do need to be solved, most likely before anything would happen. I think that the interested parties, whoever it may be, looking at buying it, I think, you know, the two tenants that are in there, I know that we redid the leases, so that there's no first rate refuel on those. And I think that going through the process of going, "Okay, we're thinking about selling this," we, direction of it, of guiding you and saying, "Okay, we are willing to look at it and say, 'Okay, let's get an appraisal done on it,' which will have to be ordered anyway, so we can figure out the fair market values for the building." And with that, you would have to order the appraisal and have it as a fair market value, also as an income approach value on that. Cost approach isn't really gonna mean much on it at that time when you're selling it. But I think, working with the current people that are there now, first get them to say yes or no if they're maybe looking at wanting to do it. You know, we, I know we don't have the language in anymore, but just the, giving them the opportunity, I think is the right thing to do. But I think that going forward, I think we need to step forward and say, "You know what? We need to look at this as an option, so that we, as a city, aren't landlords." I know that in the past, we've talked about this every time it comes up, if there's, we have to do anything with the, with the building. But I think that's something, we came up with when we had the Riverwalk Center, every time something came up, we had to replace something or do something. So it's an ongoing conversation, and do we really want to keep going at it and continually have to look at it as a landlord, when it should be a private sector, you know, it's a good location, private sector would be, you know, have the opportunity to have that building and be able to, you know, reap the benefits of that area. I think it's something that we need to really take a hard look at personally. So that's, that's my thoughts on it. Mr. Grassel?
I, I too am in favor of getting rid of that building. I do agree that those people that are in there need the opportunity to say yes or no. We, you know, do you think back to the amount of money that we've dumped just into the elevator alone in the last couple of years has been an incredible amount. And I, and I do agree that we need to get something done with that agreement, that common entryway and agreement, but I have no quorums at all about getting rid of that building.
First, thank you. Just gonna pile on. I don't want to get rid of the building, but I want, I don't want to have us be the owners of it. I want, I want to get rid of, or I do want to get rid of it. I would, what's the commercial rate per square foot right about now? Any ideas, or?
$10 per square foot.
10?
And the, the, one lease was just renegotiated because its term ended and it is over time raising that rate to the market rate. The other one-
Is that a lease rate, or is that a purchase rate?
That is a lease rate. And the other lease has a re-opener, and I don't remember whether it's this year or next year, I'd have to look back at it. But the intent is also to raise that to the lease rate over time.
But do we know what, like, the, the sales rate, like, what a purchase?
No. That's the purpose of the appraisal. And that's, Mr. Olstead suggested, or, that the income approach would be the way to go, so that when we deal with the appraiser, we will make that record, and we will ask him to put together the appraisal from that approach.
Is there any possibility of condoing that building? You know?
Anything is possible.
I should know that. See, I said, you know, instead of trying to sell it outright to one buyer, could you, as part of your approach, go to both people and say, "Well, we'll condo this with some sort of common space agreement between the two," or whatever? I don't know. But I just think we should try to, as, like you said, work with those folks, the current tenants as much as possible. This isn't something where we're, we're, we want to say goodbye to the building, we don't want to say goodbye to the tenants, is, is I think the message that we want to send, is they've been, everybody that's been in there has been a good tenant for us. We want those businesses to continue growing and be, you know, profitable and successful. But it just, like you said, it shouldn't be our role to own real estate and be tenants. It just shouldn't. So if we can look at creative ways of, you know, moving out of this ownership, I would be all for it.
Mayor, you have something?
I agree with pretty much everything that's said here. We all know this goes back to the time of the flood of 97, when we needed buildings in a hurry and everybody was taxed. Everybody was rehabbing properties that they had. Everybody, if they were even thinking about building, all those thoughts had to go on the back burner just to rehab the stuff that you had. And so the city was in a unique position to move quickly decisively. They had that pool of funds they could use. A good litmus test for should we own that building, I think, is, are we right now out trying to buy real estate and buildings in our downtown? Are we going like door-to-door saying, "You want to sell your building? We'll buy it." No, we're not, because we know better. We don't want to be in that industry. We don't, as a city, want to own real property. I like the idea, probably the next step is an appraisal. And I like the idea of connecting with our current tenants in there. If they would like to even sign a longer-term lease to make sure that after the sale, that they would not be affected by the sale, and of course, the terms of those leases would be binding upon the buyer, so that they would have the security, those tenants would have the security of staying. Mr. Demers, I had the same thought. Once we know the value of the overall building, we could condo it and it could be available for sale to the two individuals-
for sale to the two individual tenants, or maybe one of them, and someone would wanna buy as a condo the other portion. So, and I think, I don't think it's premature also to start to get our heads around what would be the use of the funds generated from that sale. I'm sure the EDA has some thoughts.
Always.
And, and we, as a council, will have some thoughts, so we'll have to do like a tug-of-war and arm wrestle to think on that. But I, I would think, the other key to all of this is to do it in a very orderly way. If you try to do it in a short-circuited way, you don't get the true value back out of it. So, by being methodical and taking it step by step, you actually are able to bring out in the market the true value of the property.
To the best of our knowledge, the building is actually owned by the city, not by the EDA, okay? So, we have that information on the table.
Mr. Reed.
It's refreshing to see that the mayor got our little point at the last meeting, that we should not be in the real estate business, and we should divest ourselves of all our properties.
Except where there are-
I know, I know the EDA is really trying that. They're trying hard. Last year, we sold, what, twelve properties?
We had contracts on twelve. A couple of people did not come through on their contracts, but we have, I think, eight or so actually have come through and are moving forward, eight to ten.
Good. I'm just glad the mayor got my point, and the rest of us.
Do we potentially have any problems with, you know, this is a public sale, right? I mean, so, do we have to go to the highest bidder, or do we have, or, how would that go?
As for the highest bidder, I can't answer that. I, I don't know what our restrictions are in that regard, but the city did set up a policy, and we would be following the policy. We're just looking for direction on whether to launch into that policy at this point.
And then we've, I would imagine, we're clear of any lien on, from the EDA on that?
I, I wanted to double check, but I'm pretty sure we are.
I mean, I think the other one was like fifteen years or so.
Yeah, I think it ended in thirteen.
It was the same as when we went through the Riverwalk Center, it was a certain time period that we had to follow, but I think that's.
I think it's probably about fourteen years ago, we were clear on that. I had to check.
You know, I'll speak to your comments about the condo situation on that, there, with, even with that, you still have to have three parties for common space anyway, so they still have to go through the negotiations and, and all of that, the three parties, so that still would be a factor, no matter what. I, I think that's, you know, getting, moving forward and look, even looking at is, is that monumental step of getting that done is probably the biggest thing. So. Anyone else have anything at this time? I think you have your direction.
Yes, sir. I will inform you that I was supposed to get back. I was called back by the owner of the other property, and I'm, we are trying to set up a meeting date next week. Okay.
Good.
You, you guys probably do remember, we had a very good sit-down to kick that whole thing off, and then we sort of allocated out the next steps to follow, and thank you for following through on that.
And who's involved in that? Couldn't be involved in your meetings?
From our side, doing the negotiations on that, the primary will be Nancy and myself. Remember, we have legal counsel that you've designated from another law firm, rather than local firm, and rather than put Mr. Goldstead into an awkward position where he's a tenant plus city attorney, that would be very difficult, and I, I think would be a very awkward situation. So, we'll probably use our other counsel on that.
That's my, my feelings too, is to make sure that Mr. Goldstead is not involved in any way, due to the fact that he's a tenant and the city attorney.
In the front end also, we brought in Mr. Emery and Mr. Stortall with some concern about surface drainage in the area, and I think that's been addressed and resolved.
Okay.
And what we will be doing with the other owner is making sure that he's aware of all that information as well.
Thanks again.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next, request to hire Parks and Rec specialist.
Mr. Rodney.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, in the budget for two thousand nineteen, we did include salary for the Parks Recreation Specialist position. Since that time, I've had the, the job description reviewed by David Drowner and Associates. That's the, the group that did our wage study this past year. They've scored it and graded it at a grade ten, which is where we expected it to be, starting at. The first rate for that would be at nineteen thirty-one an hour. So, I included the job description for you to take a look at. It is, it, it's final in the fact that it's been reviewed and scored by David Drowner and Associates, so it's short of just if there's any clerical changes to be made. It'll be finalized by the Civil Service Commission this week on Friday. They'll get to review it and approve it prior to the upcoming regular council meeting. The only thing I'll note on it is under desired qualifications on the second page. When I sent this to Megan to get into the packet, Tessa and I were still going back and forth with David Drowner and Associates on how that should be labeled under the associate's degree. We're gonna remove the fact that it asked for an associate's degree, just because there isn't an associate's degree in our region that necessarily lends itself to Parks Recreation in, in that form. So, it's, it's just gonna say, basically, the first one for desired qualifications will say two years of experience in the Parks Recreation, Physical Education field, something along those lines. I don't have the exact terminology with me, but in that form. So, it's, it's a high school diploma and two years' experience in the field. Otherwise, just requesting the, or the approval to open the hiring process for the position.
Can we have any questions for Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, with that change, will that change the pointing?
No, it won't. It would, it would be the same, because it's a desired qualification, it's not a required. So, it's just, it was kind of a matter of just how we listed that. It still asked for two years. It was either gonna ask for an associate's degree and two years' experience, or just the, or just the two years' experience. So, it'll, it's essentially, it's the same score, and I've got confirmation from her on that. And it was to change, to remove the associate's degree and change that wording, that was her recommendation.
Now, this has a CDL license for a bus?
Yep, correct.
So, do you anticipate this person being the bus driver?
I, I wouldn't say that they will be, like, in terms of the full-time bus driver, I wouldn't say that. I just think it'd be a valuable asset for this position to have it, to be able to, if we need to, on an emergency basis, with the buses that we own, have somebody be able to run across town for a playground trip if there's a bus driver unavailable, something along those lines, to be able to have that. That's something that, that I talked to Tessa about and kinda threw in there from personal experience. When I started in this field ten years ago, that was the first job I had. It was actually titled Recreation Specialist, and there's a requirement that I had was I had to have the bus driver's license for that purpose. If we needed to run across town and pick up kids at a swimming pool, or do a drop-off here or there, that we'd have that available to us to do it.
For Mr. Murphy, what, so this is a grade ten. What other positions in town are, are relative to a grade ten? I didn't have a chance to.
You're putting me on the spot here.
Well, I can answer that a little bit. The Public Works Admin position is a grade ten. That was, that was the other, Tessa confirmed that one, when she and I were going back and forth, just in the grading, and how this all looked. The Parks Maintenance Position, I think the Truck Driver Position are grade nines.
I believe the, the Building Maintenance Position here, I think, is a grade nine as well, so let's be a little bit above that.
And that, that total is sixty-one-five?
Yep, that's all included. It's just short of sixty-one-five, sixty-one-four-hundred and some change.
Is this, would this be an exempt position? Is it a Teamster position, or is it?
We have not gone through that process yet. I anticipate they will, they will petition to have it included.
But our Recreation Coordinator is not, correct?
Correct. He's not. I anticipate them, I anticipate the Teamsters will, will request that this be included.
Do, we do have one position in, or how many?
We have our Parks Foreman and our Parks Maintenance Positions are in Teamsters.
Those are both Teamsters.
Correct.
Do you, I mean, do you anticipate that that will be?
I anticipate if we challenge it, we'll lose.
You're, you're saying it's gonna be a?
It'd be a Teamster, or this person would be a Teamster.
You'd be, you'd be in position.
So, this sixty-one thousand dollars, that's not his salary, that's the whole package.
The health insurance, everything, the whole package, yep.
The salary would, would be roughly forty thousand a year.
That's correct.
Yep.
Dale. This person, the, would this be the same one that you're looking to put into the window in the office during the day and also is too, or are you still gonna be looking for a person for that also?
No, that's correct. That is this position. This'll be predominantly an office position. You'll just see there's a couple notes, notes in the essential functions that gives us the ability, if we need to have a swing person to be able to go out and move snow in a snowstorm circumstance, or to get into a bus and go pick up some kids, they'd be able to do that, but predominantly, it'd be the, the office position.
Mr. Grassel.
Just going back to, you know, the, one of the essential functions, assists with preparation of cemetery deeds, lot sales, does that mean you're gonna pull the book? So, when Brian-
Yeah, that, I mean-
When Brian is gone, that book will be here, and not where it has been stored in the past?
It would certainly give us the ability to do that. Yep.
And allow them, allow us to sell, and then them have to contact us instead?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Better.
Thank you. Through the budget process, you presented this and sold it to us as an administrative position, and you've thrown everything except the kitchen sink in here. I don't think you're gonna get the type of applicants that you're gonna want with the detail that you've got in this job description. And to me, it seems like you wrote the job description that you've already got someone in mind that you wanna hire, and you wrote the job description to fit that person's unique set of circumstances, and I don't like that. The other thing that stands out is you, to me, it seems like you realize that there isn't enough administrative jobs there, so let's tack everything that we can on, onto this job description, so that when they're not busy forty hours a week, we've got something else that we can do. We can throw them on a lawnmower, we can throw them on a snow blower, and that's not what this position should be either. History for the two new council members, when Mrs. Haddon retired, we had a long discussion on what we should do with that position, and again, we had decided at that time that it wasn't a full-time position and should be shared with other city staff. And one of the things was the secretary out at the Street Department was probably not busy forty hours a week either. And so, it was decided at that time that we combine those two positions and hire, have the one person fill both positions and have them stationed here at City Hall in the Parks and Rec Office. That never happened. For whatever reasons, it never happened. And now, we're back to this, where we wanna hire another full-time person, and I'm gonna say it again, I'm not gonna vote for it, and I'm not gonna vote for this job description as it stands, because it's not a good one.
I can, I can tell you that I can assure you, this isn't a job description that was written with the intent of anybody in mind. And I, I can also tell you that the functions, as listed in this job description, and we reviewed it at a Parks Recreation Commission level at meetings last year, going through the budget process, it, it has not, the functions have not changed since, since I've discussed it at budget meetings last year. That it's, I feel like this is a, the, the same job description that I discussed at those budget meetings last year is what's in front of you right now. It's, it's an, an office administrative support position with the ability to help our department as needed, where it's needed at the time, so that if we do have an emergency basis where we need to get out and do something in the community, whether that be we have a windstorm and some trees fall down, and we could use some extra hands to be able to go out and have the ability within their job description to do that work, or if it, it's a snowstorm and we need somebody to come in and help in a limited basis to help move snow, that'll only alleviate the extra stress and time on our employees if that person can be trained to have the ability to do that.
By doing that, I think you're gonna limit the number of applicants that you're gonna get. You're not gonna get, how to word it? You're not gonna get individuals that are uncomfortable doing snow removal and lawn mowing, that probably have great parks knowledge and programming knowledge, but can't get on a snowmower, snow blower, or lawnmower, they're not gonna apply then, and you're gonna lose them. And I think there's a lot of those individuals that have great planning ability in our community that just aren't gonna apply for it then. You're gonna lose out.
Okay.
Mayor.
I think we all remember one other part of this, and you touched on it with programming and planning. One of the things that really made us all come together and say, let's do this, is we raised some of our participation fees to offset the cost of this with the goal of serving our people better, right? So, everybody who's involved in any of our parks programs, our expectation is, whatever your service level has been coming into this moment, you're gonna see it improve. You're gonna get a more timely response when you call or show up at the window, you're gonna get a little more in-depth kinda programming day by day from our Parks Department, who may even have some offerings at really minimal extra cost that we can put in place just because we have a better handle on the day-to-day operations in our organization. I am convinced you will do that, but I, I'm gonna, we're gonna hold your feet to the fire going forward that that makes sure to happen, because that really is how we started this and how we all came together and said, yeah, let's do it, 'cause we can serve our people better, and they'll be willing to pay that little higher fee to get that better service.
Mr. Better. Just incidentally, on the fees, I'm starting to get kickback on those fees now.
Yeah.
So, it's not all roses.
Oh, no.
And I would say on the fees, it is one take that it was to expand and go beyond. Another take, the one I took, was that it was too low to begin with, so you're basically recoup, you're paying for what we're doing right now. You know, we're, we're offsetting our subsidy to the correct amount. So, in my opinion, those, that fee adjustment was long overdue just to pay for what we're doing. So, I don't consider that an, an offset. I don't, I mean, I, I, I understand your point. I just, there is a different way to look at it, and that's not how I looked at it. The other question I have, and it goes back to the, if this will be a bargaining unit position, the, one of the functions is supervised, and it says indirectly. So, where does this person fall in a chain of, does this, is this underneath the rec coordinator then? So, like, the rec coordinator and then could, would delegate to this position, and then this person?
You know, it's, I would say within our office, it's, they're gonna fall directly underneath myself in some cases, and they're gonna work underneath Mark's supervision in other cases, our rec coordinator in other cases. It just, it's kinda gonna depend on the activity and the way that we split our duties. For example, right now, in the summertime, the swimming pool falls directly underneath my supervision, and then we have a part-time or a seasonal manager there. I could see our, this position, if there's a special event that we're gonna organize at the pool, I could see this person having some indirect supervision of what's happening with that specific event. If it's something like a baseball tournament, I could see this person, you know, Mark directing some of the work of this person to help out with those activities.
So, could this person direct work on, like, the pool manager, or, or baseball coaches, or?
No, it's, the, the reason that it's there, in the way that it's written, is to, to direct, for example, we have a summer playground program, and we're gonna have ten part-time high school students to work that program. This would be the person that would direct those people. The, like, the, the pool manager, for example, would still fall under, under my direction.
That's right. I think maybe getting to your point there too, I, I think maybe where you're going is if there was some management component to it, or whatever, whether it be in the union or not.
I'm just saying, sometimes when you get into the union, there's, they'll, they'll fight for their ability not to direct work, right? I mean-
Yeah, I understand that, but they, they've also fought to include people that do a certain amount, more management than, than this one. They keep, what they push for is what is their majority of their, of their time. So, if the majority of their time is spent on managing, they even taken that path, but yeah. Yeah, I don't see it as being a preclusion in, they haven't given us much, much pushback on having people in the union doing temporary supervision of other people in the union. It's been pretty good that way.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
I would suspect, Reed, you'd want a little direction from us, you know, even as we're just visiting here, about whether or not to leave in some of the mowing and snow removal specifications in here. In your experience, I think what you're looking at is-
In your experience, I think what you're looking at is when you hit crunch time inside Parks and Rec and, and the wheels are trying to come off, some of those functions get a little bit neglected. I know you've told me at different times, yep, we didn't get to the snow as timely as I would have liked to the expectation of a certain neighbor or a certain resident. And so you're trying to hedge against some of that and maybe on a rare occasion. But the trick with that is all that machinery requires some proficiency, some familiarity, the levers, the controls. And it would be weird to, you know, hop up from a computer workstation and just hop into one of those if you hadn't done it for a month or two. And so I can see, obviously there are two sides even to that question of, do we want that one to be ready to be a machinery operator? I can see the bus and the CDL, that's a little more straightforward, but when you get into the controls on, on tractors and such, it might be a little bit of a leap. And then what's everyone else's thought? I, I think that's a valid question.
Yeah, I'd certainly, if I can jump in, I'd certainly be open to the direction of anybody in the council on what, and how you'd like to direct that as, in your authority. That's truly the intent in it. The best example is I, that I can use is when we had the windstorm last summer and we had trees down all over town and we're getting phone calls saying, you know, there's a tree, there's a tree on the berm that fell over and it's blocking my driveway. Can you, can somebody come out and take a look at it? Well, we're trying to respond as quick as, as we can in the time we have. And it fell on a day close to the Fourth of July when we had people on vacation and we're as thinly staffed as you can possibly be. In order to provide the best service we can and the best response, I'm taking questions of, well, how big of a limb is it? Is it six inches or is it two inches? When they say, well, it's a two-inch limb, but I'm half physically handicapped, I can't do anything about it. I, I'll run out or Mark will run out, hop in a truck, we'll go over, pick up the branches, get them out of the driveway so that they can get on with their day. And, and everybody goes on with the day happy. That, that's the intent of it, is that on a call-in basis, on a whim, when we don't have anybody else and we're so thinly staffed, to have this position, to be able to have the ability to do that, to help out with it in that way. If, if you guys feel in, in your direction to me that, that these couple bullet lines that describe that aren't needed and it can just be in other duties as assigned, I'm okay with that if that's the direction of this group. That's, that's the intent for me. It's an office administrative support to our recreation program and our programming position with the idea that they can help on a call-in, on a whims notice when we're swamped with those kinds of activities that we can get out and provide a service to the community.
Mr. Grassl.
How many parks do we have?
We have 12 parks.
How much sidewalk are we doing?
I don't know, I have never counted how many miles, but it's, including the trails, it's probably 20 miles of sidewalks.
How many guys do we have that don't work inside the office? That work on those?
In, in the winter snow removal, we have one full-time and one part-time employee that do the, do the sidewalks and we have one other that helps on trails.
I find that interesting. That we, we have one guy that's supposed to be taking care of the parks, flooding the rinks?
Yeah.
But he's also in charge of removing all the snow. And then another part-time guy that's doing that, correct?
Correct.
All of our outside.
Correct. And our, one of our arena, our indoor arena managers helps with part of the trail when he's available too.
Mr. Vedder. Do you have some? No. All right. Mr. Nbers.
Um, I've made my thoughts on the necessity of this specific position. And I don't know if I've changed too much off that, but I would say you should apply for the, or you should have a definition of work that is what you want. And I think, well, I would want is someone that's flexible. And I understand the, trying to get someone or, you know, it might push someone away, but to me, what I would want is someone that's a go-getter, that is willing to do those type of things. And if, you know, that's, that would be my, my preference is, like I said, I don't know if I want to keep the whole, the whole position, but I would keep that part in there. Just because, like I said, hire for what you want and don't hire and then expect them to do more than what you've, you put your application out for. If you want a flexible go-getter that's going to be involved and active and do all those things, put it in there, you know? But don't, you know, don't end around it. And like I said, hire this person and, oh, well, we need you to shovel the sidewalk or we need you to do that. Don't, if that's what you want, put it in there.
Mr. Holmes.
Honestly, to me, like on this position, the way that it's written up here right now is that what we're going to end up with is probably a full-time park employee out there on the streets doing things rather than in the office, what we were really looking for. Because I know it's, with all these other things that you want them to do, possibly, I'm afraid that, as Mr. Grassl said, when he just asked about how many people are taking care of the rinks, how many people are cleaning up snow, how many are, it sounds like it's pretty slow, pretty, pretty low. I can see that person out there more probably than in the office for some reason. And the other side of the coin is I like the job description because as an employee, if you ask them to do something nowadays, their answer is, it's not my job. So I kind of like that idea that we have stuff out there so that, you know, but I wonder if maybe just as perform other related duties, wouldn't maybe just cover everything, I mean, you know, than having, I like the idea with the license. In the business, I know what it's like and sometimes it's nice to have that person, have that option. But I'm just, I'm kind of worried, and I think that's probably Mr. Vedder's thing too, that if you want him to do all this other stuff, that we might be having this person do a lot of this stuff and not in that office at that window taking care of those people like we really want.
My point wasn't not to say that this person was going to go all day. My point was, we continue to cut our Park and Rec program and employees, which every time we have a conversation about something in East Grand Forks, the first thing we talk about are our great amenities, our facilities, our, our parks, our schools, our whatever. But we don't want to support it. We don't want to, I mean, it's, it's the backbone of everything that we've talked about for a long, long time. Henry sat over there all the time and talked about our parks are one of the most important things we had for a long time. And they still are. And I don't want you, I mean, how many kids do we have participating in all the things that we have? And if we don't cut the grass, we don't get the people there, and now we're trying to get other people involved and that's part of the process, is to get people other than our kids involved in our community and our Park and Rec programs. And that I think is a key to this job. And that's why I supported it from the get-go when we brought it up. That's why the Park and Rec Commission supported it from the get-go. It's not to, it's not just a, another person to put, I think it's, it's an important job. And, and it's going to take a unique person to, to fill that job. It's going to take someone that's got some drive, that, that wants to improve, that can see AI can make a difference, that wants to be part of the team. And if it requires them to do some things that might be uncomfortable, we all do things that are uncomfortable. And I, I think, that's all I'm going to say.
Mr. Vedder.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think it, I agree with everything that you said, Mr. Grassl, but I think that there's still, you're looking for two different types of people with, that fit this job description. The person that's going to be able to write grants and do programming has got a whole different set of skills than someone that you need to do the snow removal and the lawn mowing. Someone that writes the grants and programming has no desire to go out there and sit on a lawnmower. And they're going to be great at writing grants and coming up with new programming and running those new programs. And that's what the Park District needs. They may also need maintenance, but don't combine the two positions into one because you're never going to get the person that's going to be able to do it, either one of those with the level of skill and expertise that you're going to want. It goes back to, if we can combine two positions within the city already to fill half of this and then hire someone else, part-time or whatever, to run a snow blower or a lawnmower, then maybe that's what we need to do. But combining them, you're not going to get a person that's going to have the expertise and the drive to accomplish both sets of skills.
And I think, I, I agree with everything you're saying, Mr. Vedder, and I, I think that maybe there's unintentionally maybe too much focus being put on the, the other duties of helping in a Parks Maintenance type of position on an occasional basis. I think that there's been far too much focus put on how much time that's going to be. That, to me, it's odd, you could probably count on one hand through the year how many times that happens. For example, I, I'm thinking about the times that I've had to go out and do it. It was one windstorm early this summer in June and it was, it's been one time this winter there's been a snowstorm where I, I ran over and grabbed a shovel and shoveled out the doors so that we could get the outdoor rinks open. And that's, that's the extent that I'm talking about and talking about being able to be flexible and go and help with that. It's, it's probably on a one-hand count through the entire year basis.
That, that may be, but someone that's going to apply for this job and pulls up the Park Rec Specialist Job Description on our website and starts reading through it and says, well, I'd be good at that, I'd be good at that. And then they get over here and they go, oh wait, I got to lift 75 pounds, I've got to have a CDL, and that may not throw them so much, but I got to operate lawn mowing equipment and snow blowers? They're going, well, I can't do that, there's no way. But I'm a great grants writer and I got great ideas for our park department, but I'm not going to apply now because I can't do those two or three items that are on here.
Okay. Mr. Nbers.
I would be someone that, after working all day, if I could have a couple hours on the, at the end of the week to ride a lawnmower, I would, I'd take that. That'd be awesome.
Come to my house, honey, Friday in the summer.
But I, my objection wasn't, was quite the opposite of what I think everybody else is. I would rather not have them, another person in the office. I would rather have someone out and about. I don't think we need a receptionist. I've, I've said, I think we can take, solve those problems with technology and, and sharing those type of things. That's been my objection is I, I think a broader perspective of having them write grants and all that other stuff, I would rather have a whole nother, if, if I had my pick of the two things, I'd rather have someone that was, you know, 90% out in the field or doing those type of things than someone in the office. So I guess we have eight different perspectives on what this position should be, you know, and I don't know if we're helping at all, but...
We'll take two employees.
Yeah.
That's where I was leaning, let's go two.
How would it be if in there you just combined the, the wording about snow blowing, lawn mowing, and just say something like, operating maintenance equipment as, as needed in an emergency or something like that? You could, you could combine them and, and make it softer to where, yeah, this is, this is a unique circumstance, it's an emergency and the ability to operate some of our equipment in an emergency, however that has to go. That might make it less eye-catching, like, oh, there's a stopper for me right there.
We can certainly work with that clinically to make something like that happen.
Actually, it's, it's, it's right here on his draft, under the essential functions at the bottom. Perform other related duties to ensure the success of the Parks and Recreation Department. That covers everything.
It does, except it doesn't necessarily make them aware, you may have to hop out and go and pick up a branch and a whatever. Carla's got something too.
What I was going to say here, I think no matter who you're going to get, you're going to have a team player. And that's what we want for the Park and Rec Department and the city. So I think, you know, taking the advice of maybe looking at different language in that is probably best. I think that's, maybe go back and look at it and make sure you talk to whoever you need to talk to about that the language is correct. I think that's the best thing to do. So Carla, did you have something?
Well, I'm just going to say as a citizen, you know, and a city employee, we're all team players and I've shoveled many times outside. You know, if it has to be done, it has to be done. I mean, granted, I'm in charge of risk management, I don't want somebody falls, well, I've gotten out and shoveled, but people do that. In an emergency, you do whatever you need to do as a city employee to get city things done.
Yes, ma'am.
And just one more comment, that we are the size of a city where we do a lot of things outside what may be considered a normal job description. Yes, we all shovel at the library, we garden, we clean floors, we do bathrooms. It's not on the job description, but we do ask at the interviews, are you physically willing to do these things? You might have to someday shovel to the door to get in because it won't be done first.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other directions, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Number five, request to Blue Line Arena for ECX expose gun show.
All right. Thank you again, Mr. President. The, if, if everyone recalls, last summer, we hosted a gun show, hosted an ECX expose gun show at the Blue Line Arena. I think that event, it went very well without any issue. And I think that the, the vendors and the attendees that came to were all pleased with, with it enough that they'd like to come back again this summer in 2019. So the, the organizers of it have requested that first weekend in June again, pretty much for the same terms that we had the last year. That was, last year we had a $300 deposit to hold the building and then it was $500 a day rent. So it was a $1,000 rent that covered the access to the building and all the materials they needed.
Any other questions for Reed? I see none, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number six, discussion ATV ordinance, Snellson.
I'm not sure if, nothing needs to be decided tonight, but this is something that needs to get in front of you guys. And I guess staff is just really looking for direction. One thing that has become quite common, and I've gotten several phone calls on it, are people driving side-by-sides around. Not necessarily just an ATV that you'd hop on, but you know, the side-by-sides with windshields. And I know there's some people who put all the bells and whistles on them, so they're technically street legal. Our current city ordinance only allows for commercial ATV use. That is something that they have to apply for each year. We only have one business that applies for that city license each year. We get their information. They're, they've been very good about it. But with all these other questions, I guess I just need to know so everyone gets the same information because I know there have been some questions coming out of the police department as well that, you know, what is allowed was, what isn't allowed. So I guess included in the packet was our ATV ordinance, Thief River's ATV ordinance, Kirkston's ATV ordinance and Grand Forks' ATV ordinance. You know, I guess the first question that needs to be answered is, do you want this to be allowed or not? If so, to what extent? Just kind of glance or reading through, skimming through, it looks like Thief River allows them throughout the city on the right-hand side of the road. Kirkston is much more restricted where, you know, they can be used for snow plowing, they can go to and from a gas station, into and out of town, and then they can be driven to where they're stored. So it's not something that they can just hop on and go for a drive around town. Grand Forks, I did not, from what I pulled, I know at one point they did restrict the UTVs to stay off of all their main thoroughfares, although that restriction has now been pulled. What I have in there, I think those restrictions were still listed. So I guess at this point, oh, and the other thing that I wanted to also bring up is I know the question has come up with these people, even if they're street legal, can they be driven in town? I found looking through the guide from the League of Minnesota Cities, that cities can be more restrictive. So even if they are street legal, if the city prohibits them, they're not to be driven in the city. So with that being said, I guess this is twofold. The other part of this is, and I don't know if Chief Headland wants to talk about this at all, but one item, another item with ATV use is they are in our greenway. There's obvious trails. We actually had some people call, they were driving on the side of the dyke, got pulled over. They bought their house on the south end of town because they wanted to be close to the... Um, there's obvious trails, um, we actually had some people call, they were driving on the side of the dyke, got pulled over, they bought their house on the south end of town because they wanted to be close to all the ATV trails in town. Um, so they were informed that they are not supposed to be there. Back in, and I have it in the RCA, March of, um, March 15th in 2005, the council adopted the rules of the greenway, making it no motorized zone. Um, I think there are some areas that maybe should be, such as down by the boat landings. We do have parking lots and stuff, and, and maybe what is needed is signage, so people don't drive past a certain point. I know there's a couple fishing spots down by the red, where the red and the Red Lake River come together, that are very popular to fish at, and if we wanted to allow maybe some vehicle, vehicles or motorized traffic down there. Um, but otherwise, we're not supposed to be, um, or putting that, the rules were adopted, but putting that in actual ordinance form. So then, if somebody is caught, there's already penalties and everything in place that can go along with that. So, that being said, I guess I would like direction from the council. I'm not expecting this to be decided tonight by any means. There are residents that I could call in, and you can get opinions from them, because I do have the numbers for about four people that are interested in how this progresses. If you guys just want to think about this, we can bring it back to the next work session. And with that, um, I do know that Mr. Demers has also been contacted, so if you want to make any comments, feel free to add in at any time. So, I guess, so yeah.
Chief, do you have anything to answer?
No, it's, it's a question that comes up annually. Um, I know Megan has researched it countless times. We get three to four calls minimum per year, and Megan, I have gone back and forth, she, she's researched it, you know, I don't know how many times. I've looked at our ordinance, I've looked at the state ordinance, is trying to figure out, um, they're not the most, neither the state nor the city. You know, statutes and ordinances are the most clear-cut. Now, they'll talk about engine size and things like that, which I guarantee you, the average police officer that might happen to pull somebody over is going to look at it and go, I don't know if this thing's legal or not. Um, but beyond that, I guess I personally don't have an issue with it, but it's, there are, you know, certainly should be some, some restrictions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I was contacted by a couple, um, residents that were questioning, and really, and that is the biggest problem I think we have, is you can look by all this information, how many classifications, how many different things there are out there, and they can't get a straight answer from, you know, you'd go, you'd look at the state stuff, you look at the county stuff, you look at RPD, and you might go from one officer to the next and get a different answer. And that's, that is a problem. And I think that should be our goal, is to at least try to come up with something that's as easy to enforce for, for our police officers, because that's the people that I would imagine are going to do the, the bulk of this work. Um, personally, I think, um, I, my goal on this would, besides making it simple to administer, clearer to administer at least, um, is I don't think that we want to open up our greenway to motorized vehicles, in my opinion. Um, I think the way we have it right now, so I would champion any, any effort to, um, you know, make sure that that's etched in granite, that no, you can't drive down there. Give, give our law enforcement any tools possible to, um, or any backing that, yes, this is our ordinance. Make it clear. Um, as far as on the street, you know, we've, we've come a long way since, you know, the old three-wheelers or whatever, you know? Now, you know, you look at some of these side-by-sides, and when you talk to the folks, they're, it's street legal. Now, I don't know exactly what that means, because if it's not, if it's not legal by the city, it's not street legal, you know? So, but they, they come, they've got steel frames, they're, you know, decent sizes, engines, um, they've got, you know, the, the good seat belts and, you know, blinkers and all those type of things. I think if we can come up with a reasonable set of criteria that makes sense for those top-end type of units, I don't have a problem with allowing something like that on our streets. I do have a problem as it migrates down, because I think there becomes, and I don't have any evidence or data to back it up, but anecdotally, or I guess just thinking about it, you know, in a thought experience, it, it makes sense that it would be less safe to drive golf carts around, just from an acceleration, you know, standpoint, you know? They just don't scoot across the roads as quick, they're, if someone does hit them, they're going to be, you know, blasted out of their seat. Um, you know, I, I can foresee kids sitting, you know, dad or grandpa's driving and kids sitting in the side of a golf cart, and you could end up with some pretty big problems. So, I don't want to go and just legalize anything and everything, um, but I would be more than willing to work with folks on some of these, I mean, some of these units are 25, $30,000. I mean, they're as expensive as a car, you know? So, um, I don't, I don't know. I think if we want to work on something like that, I don't know if there's like a, there could be a cheap, relatively cheap way to license these and administer it through, you know, Megan and the, and the chief's department, um, so that you have to register it, and then once it's registered, there's a number on it that you can track, or if you can tag on with something that the DNR already does or what, so...
I was going to say, based on what I've looked at so far, they have to register their machines with the DNR every three years. So they should already have, so if they're not registered, then that would be, and they're driving around...
That's already, but what I'm saying is something that would, that would designate something that's street legal in East Grand Forks, and just something that's registered with the DNR, because you can register your four-wheeler, you know, or you need to register your four-wheeler, but I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable having four-wheelers run around. And I think, now, you can't, I think we should also think about the fact that when you go into these smaller ones, I've seen it in neighborhoods, all of a sudden you got the kids whipping around there, you know, and I don't want that either. You know, I, it all, it does require 16 and stuff, but as you allow for these more recreational type things, I think when you look at these UTVs, they're not necessarily like your recreational. They're, they're actually using them to go to the store, they're going here and there, they just like the feel of it more than a, it's more like riding a motorcycle, I guess, but... And then the other thing would be, is if we could require or set a limit for noise or whatever, I think sometimes these smaller engines get a little bit, you know, loud in neighborhoods. But other than that, I, let's do it.
Mr. Jones?
The side-by-sides nowadays are, um, most of them are probably built better than most of these cars that are running on the road. So, I don't have a problem having the side-by-sides, and I do believe that those that are street legal, I think they actually go to the DMV and buy a plate and put on them. So, um, I think the only thing that we'd need to do is to probably make sure that they abide by the same rules as you do with the car. So, I wouldn't have a problem with letting them run the streets, just the side-by-sides, not the four, not the four-wheelers or the three-wheelers or them, but, and also I'd agree with, uh, Mr. Demers, that, uh, I don't think we want to allow them on the greenway.
Whatever we do, um, I agree with the chief, that where is the line of legal and not legal has to be very clear. It can't come down to engine size, or this, or this, or this. It's going to have to be probably a full-size plate, so someone did certify turn signals, side mirrors, shoulder harness, I mean, all the normal stuff, brake lights, headlights. Um, and, and education is a big deal, and why I say that is, we have a prominent member of one of our commissions, who very proudly drove his side-by-side up into the city hall parking lot, came in and did his thing, attended the commission meeting, and feeling pretty good about life, until he went out and someone had picked up and moved his machine to another location. I don't know exactly who that was. But he, he thought he was completely legal in driving it here. He had no idea that we have no street legal side-by-side allowed on our, on our roads, and he's about as entrenched in our city as one could be. So whatever we do, we want to make sure to do the educational piece very, very thoroughly, because we have a lot of good, decent folks, probably not quite knowing what's expected of them, the way we are.
Mr. Johnson, did you have something to add?
Only thing I was going to say was, uh, I think maybe, uh, in my ward, I, I should get a test of the people, because we, they've got snowmobiles and whatnot, and they need, the public needs to be informed that this is happening, so they can put input into what their desires are. We can go aye, 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 it doesn't matter what aye, I mean, it's, it's the people that are in this town.
Are you talking about out of the public area or...
Yeah, something.
Well, the hope would be too, maybe the press pick up on this today, and then the folks show up at the council meeting where the final decision will happen. I, I think it's important to hear from the folks.
That have them.
Yep.
Mr. Edgell?
Uh, just to put in my two cents, just to ask, answer Mr. uh, uh, Demers' question, the easiest is not allow them at all. Then there isn't any enforcement, there isn't any confusion, and you don't have to worry about it, you know? So now, it is...
There's still enforcement, because people are still going to drive.
Well, but then there's enforcement, you know, then there's just an enforcement issue, we know. Is that the answer? That's entirely up to you. Uh, just to clarify a couple of things, these side-by-sides, UTV, UTVs, they may be street legal, but nowhere in the state are they legal to be on the road to drive in a city, unless we have an ordinance that says they can. So if you don't have an ordinance, they're not legal, okay? Uh, with the UTVs.
Can they drive on, like, county highway?
No, I don't believe so. No, they're not, they're not legal unless they've been provided the ability to do so. And so, there's, there's just a lot of those questions, and I get the confusion, I get the confusion, but, but, uh, uh, you know, you look at Thief River, okay? Thief River lets a, you know, has a rule that they can use these whatever, snow cats, ATVs, UTVs. However, you got to look at Thief River. They've got Articats sitting there, and, and, you know, obviously, you know, cut off your nose despite the face if you're not going to allow some type of utilization of the snowmobiles and the ATVs and the UTVs in Thief River. Um, so it, and it's not as simple as saying, well, if you've got a side-by-side that's, you know, a $25,000 unit, or you're driving a go-kart, you know, to try to differentiate some of that stuff. That's where the confusion comes in, and that's where I think everybody gets a little bit, um, uh, angry or frustrated, because, because there isn't a, a specific definitive answer. If you go through what Megan was saying regarding the, the League of Minnesota Cities information, they literally have pictures of everything, you know? I mean, from, from go-karts to electric bikes, to scooters, to, to, uh, UTVs and, and everything. So there's, there's rules and laws and statutes that comply for all of those things. And, and so, you know, if I was going to potentially have a preference for enforceability, I think following almost suit with Kirkston, if you're going to allow some of this stuff, it's to and from the gas station, to and from your storage unit, and if in fact you're going to use it for snow removal purposes or those types of things, you can do it, but you've got to take the most direct route to do these things, and it's got to be on the side of the road. Um, then you're getting into the, the golf carts. I mean, you know, we're, I, I don't think that those are legal at all in any place, unless you're going to consider it a, a, a special use vehicle where an individual actually has to have it street legal, lights, all of those things, and typically they're disabled, and they're the ones that have the ability to utilize those. So I mean, I, I get where Megan's coming from, where she wants to have some answers, but this is one of those areas where there isn't a definitive, you know, bright line in the sand, where, where it's real easy to distinguish on, on how you, how you want to do it.
Well, at this point in time, all I'm asking about is ATVs. We have a separate ordinance for snowmobiles, we have a separate ordinance for special use vehicles, which actually is listed for golf carts. And talking with Mr. Demers on this, we didn't want to bite off more than we could chew.
And, and I get that. The, the problem that you have is, is the definition of the, of, and I won't say snowmobiles, but UTVs, ATVs, golf carts, recreational vehicles, they all are kind of lumped under this type of a special vehicle ordinance that we're talking about. And so the, you know, I, I think that there's got to be some, a little bit more discussion and thought than just sitting around here today and, and making a decision if you like it or you don't like it.
Well, and if you guys want to consider all of them all at the same time, I can, in the next work session, I can bring forward the snowmobile ordinance, and I can bring forward the special use, or a special use vehicle ordinance. So you can look at all of them at the exact same time. I just didn't want to, I figured, you know, with the three ordinances that I had already, I didn't want to overload you with information at this point, so, but it's all something that can be looked at. Um, I think the ordinance 75 lists specifically streets that can be used by the commercial ATVs, um, and that's something that should probably be repealed, because, um, half of those streets no longer exist. It was approved in 1996. So a lot of those streets are in the greenway.
And then the other thing that you brought up was with the greenway rules, I think that's a, a really good idea to put that in some type of an ordinance form, so that you have it on the books for enforcement purposes, other than just a policy that the city's, uh, following or recommending. That's my two cents.
I think it's probably a good idea.
Thank you.
I'm all back.
Does anybody know, can you get, like, liability, like, collision liability type insurance on a golf cart? Like, will they...
Absolutely.
With, they'll insure you for the street?
Some, some of it's under your homeowners, it's all different policies, you got to, you got to buy the insurance. And in doubt...
Well, I think any of these things are required to have insurance on, is, if they're going to be allowed on the street.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and like, will insurers even insure, uh, something for, like, a street liability? Like, a collision or, you know? I, I get, like, yeah, if you have a golf cart, they're going to, you can have your homeowners owners cover it, but its intended use is to be on a golf course. They're anticipating it being driven down Demers Avenue. A, a wonder...
It must look amazing.
Yeah, exactly. And that's what...
Or at the lake, or whatever.
And that's the problem that we have with all of this stuff, is, is, is the fact about it's, it becomes an enforcement issue, because there is one, one person's going to drive their golf cart, we'll just say, down the street on the side and go from A to B. The next person's going to have the two seats in the back where, where the golf clubs usually go, where you're at the lake and you're hanging off the back, and the kids are on the side, and the, you know, and, and so at, at some point in time, it just becomes, it becomes a very, uh, difficult enforcement issue, other than just telling them to go, you know? You, you can't do that. So it, it's, it's fairly complicated, I mean, it's not anything that we can't resolve, but it's not as simple as just saying, big ones are okay, little ones aren't, you know what I'm saying? It becomes just a difficult situation under those circumstances.
I guess the point I'm getting at is, is it, would one way of doing it is saying, well, or make the insurance companies decide? I mean, they've got pretty good mechanisms of figuring out risk, and if we require a $300,000 liability policy on anything that's driven in town, you know, that's, I mean, what's your car liability? It's something 150,000 or 300,000?
One, three.
So, if you required that, the insurance companies would make their decisions really quickly on what they're going to allow driving on the streets, you know? So, I mean, that's, that's a private sector approach to, to figuring out regulation, but...
Did we talk to our city's insurance agents? We'll be bringing it back to have a larger discussion.
Okay.
Thanks a lot, Megan.
Do you have a motion adjourned? Well... Second. All fair and say aye.
Aye.
Both in sign, we're concerned that you need to go.